I know it's two minutes till, but I believe we are ready. We'll call our meeting to order. If you'd like to join us, we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then Councilman Helms will give our invocation.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is right. Father, we thank you for another beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for many blessings of life. We pray that you'll be with us tonight, guide us, direct us as we conduct the town's business, and give us the wisdom. We give you the praise and the glory and honor for God, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I'll let everybody get seated. Everybody have a chair? Good. The first thing I'd like to ask is that if you have a cellphone, would you please silence that phone so that we can all give each other our individual attention? We do operate under a process, so we will have opportunity for public comment as soon as we have had the minutes from the last three meetings taken into record. Council, we have the minutes, you have the minutes, of the August 12th regular council meeting, the August 17th council budget workshop, and the August 26th council workshop. Does anyone have any changes, deletions, or additions?
I have one minor one on the 8/26 minutes. Under Capitol Projects, just refers to the vote as Councilwoman McCarley instead of Cook. I know, a year later, we're still trying to get used to it, but it just, it refers to me as McCarley instead of Cook. No, that's fine, it was just one little, it's a hard habit. 8/26 under Capitol Projects, it was just one place.
Any other changes, deletions, or additions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
A big motion, except the minutes as read.
Second.
Have a motion?
With the amendment.
A motion and a second with the amendment to change the name in the minutes of the August 26th council workshop. All those in favor by show of hand, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 246 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Do we have anyone signed in?
Mr. Sill, do you want to speak again?
No, I mean, you're on air again, dude.
Let me think about it. For those of you that are new to this, Mr. Sill spoke to us in our open forum, and we are trying to work with him to bring resolution to his issue. Do we have anybody else?
No ma'am.
No one? Alright. Hi, come in. Hearing that, we will close the public comments section. Presentations. We will begin with presentation number one, introduction of Ryan Wilson, Town of Fort Mill's new athletic superintendent, and Brown Simpson will provide that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor of council. It is with great joy that we introduce Ryan tonight. I'm going to ask Ryan, here he is right here with me. He's not behind me.
We could not miss that section.
Ryan joined us back the first week of August, and he came on board with us as our new athletic superintendent. Ryan is a native of North Myrtle Beach, a graduate of Coastal Carolina, and he's very proud of that after that victory Saturday night against the Kansas Jayhawks in the football game. But Ryan comes to us from Columbia County, Georgia, where he's been about the last six years, and we're excited to have Ryan on our team. He's part of the big team with the Town of Fort Mill, but also in the Parks and Recreation Department. And I'm going to let Ryan say anything else he wants to, but we are certainly glad to have him on with us, and we wanted to formally introduce him tonight.
Thank you. We always like to meet new employees, so welcome aboard.
Alright, just wanted to thank you all for having me. I want to thank Brown for bringing me on. It's a very growing town, so I've gotten definitely immersed in everything that's going on, so...
Like a fire hose, right?
But yes, I look forward to building a good foundation for the Parks and Rec Department, especially in athletics, implementing new things, changing some things. Brown has supported everything I've proposed, 100 percent, so I'd just like to thank him for that as well.
Great. We are very excited to have you on board, and we look forward to seeing great things.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Ryan.
Appreciate it. Alrighty then. Presentation number two, proclamation for fire prevention week 2019. Now, I want you to know, when your clerk of court gives you something in bigger print so that you can actually see it, she is the best. I mean, by far, the best. So, I have to read from here, and then you come on up and I'll give you the proclamation. How about that? Fire prevention week proclamation 2019, I'm going to sound like an auctioneer as I go through this, okay? Whereas the Town of Fort Mill is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Fort Mill, and whereas fires are serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed 2,630 people in the United States in 2017 according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to, are you ready for this, 357,000 home fires. And whereas the majority of the US fire deaths, four out of five occur at home each year, and whereas the fire death rate per thousand home fires reported to US fire departments was 4 percent higher in 2017 than in 1980, and whereas when the smoke alarm sounds, Fort Mill residents may have less than two minutes to escape safely, and whereas Fort Mill residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Fort Mill residents should make a home escape plan drawing a map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows, and whereas Fort Mill residents should practice the home fire escape plan with everyone in the household, including visitors and puppies, and whereas Fort Mill residents should practice the home fire escape drill at least twice a year during the day and at night, and whereas Fort Mill residents should teach children to escape on their own in case adults can't help them, and whereas Fort Mill residents should make sure everyone in the home knows how to call 911 or the local emergency number from a cellphone or a neighbor's phone, and whereas Fort Mill residents should practice using two different ways out, and whereas Fort Mill residents in a real emergency should get low and go under the smoke to get out quickly, and whereas Fort Mill residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, or things, and whereas Fort Mill residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2019 fire prevention week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape, Plan and Practice Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Gwen Savage, Mayor of Fort Mill, do hereby proclaim October the 6th through the 12th of 2019 as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout this town, and I urge all the people of Fort Mill to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Fort Mill Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2019. I'd like to give this to you. We're extremely fortunate to have the fire department and the employees that serve us in this department. They put themselves between us and danger every single day, so thank you so much. Greatly appreciate all that you provide to us and our citizens. Thank you so much. Will you say anything?
Sure. So this proclamation leads us into October, and again, October 6th through the 12th is our Fire Prevention Week. So we focus the whole month and the entire year for, in fire education, so we'll be in the schools that week, all the elementary schools in the town, in kindergarten and third grade classes, teaching them about fire safety in their homes, following NFPA's motto for this year, and then we close out that week, October 12th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the fire station at 121 Tom Hall Street with our fire department over, open house, and we encourage the town, the community, council, employees of the town to come by and see us, and just enjoy a day with the fire department, and learn a little bit about what we do. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you so very much. Let's give him a applause.[617.23][617.23](Applause). Thank you so much. Everyone, please pay attention to those guidelines that are provided by the very folks that would have to come rescue you if you did not. Presentation number three, proclamation, another thing, for Constitution Week 2019. You want to read this one?
Sure. I'm going to choose the big print as well. The Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina proclamation, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, Gwen Savage, by Mayor of the authority vested in her as mayor in the city of Fort Mill, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and the day of September 19th as Constitution Day, and for our citizens to affirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us, this guardian of our liberties. Thank you. Thank you.
Did you make a correction, 17th instead of 19?
No, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Would you like to receive?
Sure.
Hey there.
Hey. Thank you. Oh no, thank you. Nothing more precious than the Constitution that provides us the framework that we need to live under. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Absolutely. (Applause). I'd like to. Thank you all for assisting us. When we do a proclamation, it is to draw attention to the vital parts of information and commitment that we as citizens make. So thank you for giving that attention, and those of you that provide those services that we can so happily point out. Thank you so much. Presentation number four, Visit York County update from the past year, Billy Dumlap. Hi, Billy.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
You didn't think we'd ever get to you, did you?
I know. Okay. Mayor, council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and of course, thank you for your service to the Town of Fort Mill, it's very much, very much appreciated. I would like to thank you for allowing Visit York County to be your tourism partner, and we'd also like to thank you for Brown Simpson, serving on our Board of Commissioners. He's been with us a few months, and I like most in York County, have known Brown almost my entire life, and I do appreciate him serving on our board. What I'd like to do tonight is just kind of give you kind of a state of the union address for tourism in Fort Mill specifically, but also a little bit about tourism in York County. Our mission and our purpose, our mission is to create a thriving travel and tourism economy in York County. Our purpose is to develop an authentic unified identity for York County and to promote the long-term development and marketing of York County as a destination. Now, a year in review from 2018, 2019, some of our new initiatives that we launched, the Yoko Brew Trail, which is, has become wildly popular, much more so than what we anticipated. Also, we launched a destination marketing fee program that we'll talk a little bit about, that's an enhanced partnership with some of our local hotels. Battle at the Rock Basketball Showcase at Nationport High School. We launched our Mobile Visitor Center, that I'm sure you've seen around the county. We have hired a digital communications manager. If you follow us on social media, you know her oh so well because she does a great job keeping everyone informed of what's going on. We also launched the MLK Junior Holiday Basketball Showcase. We played that at York Comprehensive High School this past year. We hosted our first annual meeting. All of you should have received an invitation to our next annual meeting, which is September 26th. The first one was at the Greenway at the Dairy Barn. This year is at Southern Charm Events in Rock Hill. We also, for the first time ever, had 100 percent participation with municipal funding, which for us meant that prior to me joining the organization, we received funding from York County, Fort Mill, and Rock Hill, where we provided services for every municipality in York County. Now we are receiving funding from every municipality, so we receive accommodations tax funding from York, we receive hospitality tax funding from Clover, and hospitality tax funding from Tika K. So that is a, that is a first. We also have significantly increased our sponsorship funding for events. We have changed our marketing direction to where we are more, we're marketing more regionally now. Before, we were casting a wide net and expecting to bring all of those visitors to York County. So now we've focused on anything that's within a day's drive. So we're focusing on really about a three-hour radius around York County. We also have launched our Road Trip York County YouTube series, which has been wildly successful as well. We have launched a new website, and we are now using the Destinations International Economic Impact Calculator. Now, why is that significant? The Destinations International Economic Impact Calculator that we use for every event that we bring in or that we partner with coming to York County, it's an industry standard for measuring how events impact your destination. The Event Impact Calculator measures the economic value of an event and calculates its return on investment to local taxes. Destination organizations and CVBs are better prepared to make the case to policymakers and stakeholders for the ongoing development and growth of events and meetings. So what this does, this standardizes everything. So, because when you hear economic impact numbers, there are several formulas for calculating that. Destinations International is the authority on destination marketing organizations across, around the world, and this is their Economic Impact Calculator. So we're comparing our numbers with the Charleston, the Louisville, the San Antonio, the Dallas, Texas, those types of organizations. It's credible, it's localized, and it's comprehensive. So we have started that at the beginning of last year, and it changed our numbers significantly, but in a positive way. Now, how we measure success, the Yoko Brew Trail won the Bundy Award at the South Carolina Governors Conference on Travel and Tourism. The Governors Conference gives two awards annually. It gives one to the top tourism, the top tourist event of the year, and this past year was the Cooper River Bridge Run, and then it gives an award for the top tourism initiative in emerging communities. Emerging communities is anything outside of Myrtle Beach, Charleston, Hilton Head, Greenville, and Columbia. So the Yoko Brew Trail won the Bundy Award, so we were excited about that. Also, Battle at the Rock Basketball Showcase, which was at Nationport High School, won the National Association of Sports Commission's Locally Created Event of the Year, which is a national award. Now, also, you, if you've read, York was recognized as the USA Today 10 Best Reader's Choice Travel Award for small, best small-town cultural scene. I mention that because how that became a reality, and we'll talk a little bit about that in just a minute, was we host writers. We host writers, bloggers, influencers, anybody that we want to talk about great things in York County. So we brought a USA Today travel writer to York County, and we pitched them stories. So we pitched them downtown York. This writer fell in love with downtown York, that's how York won that award, was us bringing that writer into the community, and you'll see how we've done that in Fort Mill a little bit later. We had over 130 stories published this past year compared to 41 the previous year. That is us, again, pitching stories to writers, bloggers, influencers, getting them to write about things in York County. We also increased our impressions on our social media channels by 181 percent, so that's more people hearing the story about what a great place York County is as a travel destination. Now, by the numbers, tourism's big business in York County, and the Panthers coming to Rock Hill changes the tourism landscape of this region, not just for Rock Hill, but anything along the I-77 corridor. I spent two days in Frisco, Texas, touring the Star, which is the Dallas Cowboys facility, and my understanding from hearing Mr. Tepper speak, Dallas, what the Cowboys did in Frisco is a 10, what he's wanting to do in Rock Hill is an 8. If it's an 8, York County's never seen anything like it. It will change how York County's considered a destination, it will change everything. In 2018, $258 million in visitor spending from tourism in York County. $6 million in local tax revenue came from people coming into York County to spend money. In 2018, tourism in York County saved every household $247 per year in taxes paid, and what that means is because of money that was spent in York County by tourists, everybody in this room that owns property paid $247 less in local taxes. Thank you. Now, our funding, yes, thank you to everyone that has come here and spent money. Now, our funding over the last two years, in 2018, 2019, here's how our funding was set up. 82 percent of our funding came from York County last year. 7 percent came from Rock Hill, 3 percent came from Fort Mill, 3 percent came from grants, and 1 percent came from other avenues. As you know, the county cut our funding by 42 percent last year to purchase the 1,900 acres along the Catawba River. This year, this current budget year, this is how our budget shakes out. 62 percent of our funding comes from York County, 20 percent comes from our destination marketing fee program, which is our partnership with local hotels, 7 percent comes from Rock Hill, 4 percent comes from Fort Mill, 5 percent comes from grants, and 2 percent comes from other areas. So we have had to be creative. We have generated over $500,000 in new revenue for this budget year. Events in Fort Mill in 2018, 2019, the McDavid Youth Basketball Tournament in August, right at $225,000 in direct economic impact, this was at Nationport High School, right at 1,000 attendees, 568 room nights for that event. Big Shots Camp in September, $87,000 in direct economic impact, 495 attendees, 205 room nights, that was at Nationport and Fort Mill High School. Rivals Regional Combine, which was at Nationport, April 6th and 7th, $534,000 in direct economic impact, 5,300 attendees, 934 room nights. That has become a really, really big event. It rivals our FBU Top Gun Football Recruiting Camp in Rock Hill. McDavid USA Youth All-American Camp in April, about $101,000 in direct economic impact, 660 attendees, 228 room nights. So you can see the impact of people coming into Fort Mill and spending money has on the local economy. Phenom Hoops, a local, a regional basketball organization, hosted four events in Fort Mill in 2019. Little over $2 million in estimated economic impact from those four events combined. 11,629 attendees, 4,600 room nights. A lot of people coming to the area. Now, Battle at the Rock National Basketball Showcase at Nationport High School, November 30th to December 1st. This was the first time we'd ever hosted this event. This is an event that we started, we hosted, something a little bit different for this organization. We had 19 teams from across the southeast, including the number-one ranked team in the country, the IMG Academy, that was the GEICO National Champions this past year. We had over 2,600 attendees. We were sold out on Saturday night at Nationport. National media exposure. In 2019, we've, we will grow to three days and 35 teams. We have a team from California coming, we have two teams from Arizona coming, we have several of the top players and top teams in the country that will be coming back to Nationport this year.[1543.73][1543.73](Music) So we are excited about that event coming back, and just to kind of give you a little bit of information, four of those players that you saw in that video, two are going, two are at North Carolina now, one's at Kentucky, one's at Tennessee. So we're talking big-time basketball players that were at Nationport High School. So, in 2018, 2019, nine events we hosted in Fort Mill, right at $3 million in direct economic impact, 21,776 attendees, 6,691 room nights. That's just in the nine events that we brought to Fort Mill. Now, events for this year, Charlotte Soccer Club, which used to be Discoveries, is bringing three tournaments to York County. We will be playing a good many of the games in Fort Mill. There'll be 500-plus teams over those three tournaments, Comporium Athletic Park doing one in September, one in November, and one in March. Now, Battle at the Rock will be December 12th, 13th, and 14th. Phenom Queen City Showcase, 100-plus teams will be playing at Catawba Ridge and Nationport April 13th and 14th, and then McDavid will be coming back to Nationport with 200 athletes in March. We're estimating over a $5 million economic impact in 2019, 2020, just in, just in Fort Mill. Now, leisure travel in Fort Mill, again, is a big deal. We've estimated direct spending impact of $2.8 million last year for over 350 non-sporting event groups with over 12,000 in attendance. That is groups that we worked with to bring to Carolins, the Greenway, Narrow Way, and more. And I cannot help but sing the praises of Narrow Way, one of the hidden gems in York County. You can't imagine the amount of people that that facility brings into York County on a weekly basis. Ag &amp; Art Tour, largest free farm and art tour in the nation with over 35,000 visitors since 2012. Expanded to two weekends in 2019 to accommodate 23 farms in York County, added a third weekend because of the weather. We had 11 farms on the eastern side of York County, four stops in Fort Mill, including two farms. Now, services that we're currently offering in Fort Mill, we have a kiosk in downtown, the Mobile Visitor Center. Fort Mill has visibility in over 20 brochures that we distribute to 40,000 visitors annually. We also have a tear-off map of Fort Mill that's distributed at the Visitor Center and area hotels, and then, of course, we promote your events, attractions, restaurants on social media, our app, and visit YorkCounty.com. Now, marketing and communications, we had 47,457 video views on Facebook for videos involving events in Fort Mill, including scarecrow crawl video, strawberry fest, and the pucker butt pepper eating contest. We had two Facebook Lives, one for the We had two Facebook Lives, one for the Strawberry Festival and one for a walking tour of downtown Fort Mill. We hosted 15 writers on press trips for Fort Mill to include Hobos, Pucker Butt Pepper Company, Amor Artists, Southern Sugar, and Kingsley. This is the article in Charlotte Five. This was a writer that we brought into the county. And she did a story on vacation just across the border from Charlotte in York County. And it featured two Fort Mill stops in that. Also, Charlotte Magazine did a cover story in July for Beer Travel, a trip to Fort Mill. They did a four-page spread in Charlotte Magazine on the beer scene in York County with craft beer. And it featured Amor Artists in that as well. Events we promoted on social media channels, push notifications, and the Yoko Buzz. You can see all the things that we push throughout the year. Summer Concert Series and Proper Pig Opening, Kingsley Restaurant openings, movies in the park, every Main Street Jam. The Yoko Buzz is a newsletter that we send out via email. It has 15, right, almost 1,600 subscribers. Goes out every Friday morning highlighting the top five things to do in York County that weekend. I do know in speaking to a couple of different Realtor groups, this is very popular with them because when they're bringing in potential home buyers that are spending the weekend, they use this to showcase what's going on that weekend. In conclusion, Fort Mill's partnership with Visit York County means more marketing for Fort Mill, more exposure for Fort Mill, more events for Fort Mill, more promotion for Fort Mill, which equals more hospitality tax, more accommodations tax funding for Fort Mill, which enhances the quality of life offerings that makes Fort Mill a very unique town. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Does that want me more cars, will it?
Excuse me?
Does that want me more automobiles?
Well, I could tell you, you know, I've said this since I came here. I found out that we were in the relocation business just by default because really, nobody else kind of took the banner of relocation. So, we ended up doing that. And when I first got here, I thought, you know, that's counterproductive to what we do. Because what I want you to do, I want you to come here, I want you to spend money, and then I want you to go home. And then, I want you to come back again. But what happens is people come here and fall in love with it, and they end up moving here. So, yeah, I can't help you with the amount of vehicles, this on the road, that's for sure.
Any other questions for Billy?
It's an awesome presentation. So much work that's gone into that. As the town looks at new website and social media reorganization, I certainly, my hat's off to you that you got all that done in one year.
I appreciate it, too.
It's incredible. So, we certainly appreciate the trail you blaze so that we can follow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Billy. We appreciate you being here.
Yes, thank you for numbers. There are no old business items this evening. New business items, new business item number one. First reading and public hearing. We'll open the public hearing as soon as I finish reading it. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the town of Fort Mill, Article 1, in general, Section 5A, Establishment of Districts, so as to add a new zoning district to be called the Institutional District. And Article 2, Requirements by Districts, so as to add a new section to be called Section 29, Institutional District. To invoke the pending ordinance doctrine, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Our expert is Penelope. We will open the public hearing portion of this item now. Anyone like to speak to this item? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion on this particular item.
I'll make a motion. We approve new business item number one.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Do we have any questions? Penelope, would you like to offer anything to us? Thank you. Penelope, for those of you that are unaware, is our town planner.
Good evening, everyone. This text amendment, council has asked staff to develop this text amendment to create for Institutional District. And this is for any current or future school sites. It went through the process with our Planning Commission. They recommended approval. We did have a meeting with the school district as well. There were some tweaks in the language, but we are in favor of this. And this is just a way that we can be able to know where all the schools are, what they're zoned, and also eliminate, you know, properties of the school district if they want to turn it over to residential. Now, it's only allowed for that Institutional District. Any of the current schools or any future schools, we will rezone them to Institutional.
Any questions for Penelope? This is something that we asked for, and we are happy to see it finally occurring. So, thank you so much. Any questions, council members? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion and the second, please show of hands. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Thank you so much. You might as well stay there. New business item number two, first reading and public hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the town of Fort Mill so as to change the zoning designation for York County tax map numbers. I detest having to read all these numbers. 0200901038, a portion of. 0202101301 and 300, and 282, and 006, from R-25 Residential to Institutional, I-N-S-T. Then, we have parcel number 02009101038, portion, from Mixed Use to Institutional. 0200901040035 and 321, from R-15 Residential to Institutional. 0200901001, from LC, Local Commercial, to Institutional. 0201301061, from General Residential, GR, to Institutional. 0201201268, PND, Planned Neighborhood Development, to Institutional. 0201201201, from R-10 Residential, to Institutional, Wards 1, 2, 3, and 4. We will open the public hearing for this item at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
Is there a map available?
Christopher, can you pull up a map? I think it's going to be difficult to pull up all the schools.
Essentially, Mayor, it would be a map showing every school location in the town limits currently. All existing schools. It's difficult to show that on a map, particularly with the screen.
It's every school in the district?
Well, may...
If you'd like to step up to the podium, we could hear you better. Yes, sir. Thank you.
We'd like to see the changes you have planned and for which areas.
The changes are to ensure that all of the schools are in the same type of zoning ordinance. And as you can have heard through everything I read, that they were in multitudes of different zoning. So, this is to bring some consistency with that. What specifically can we provide to help you with this?
We just want to know what areas and what's changed from what to what.
Chris, do you want to... Or, Penelope, would you like to address? Thank you.
There are about 14 schools in the town limits of Fort Mill. So, around the town of Fort Mill, we've put signs at the school sites. So, those actual properties that are from K through 12 in the town limits of Fort Mill, those are the properties that are changing from the zoning classification to Institutional District. Any new schools that come, you would have to go through the process, again, through the Planning Commission to rezone to Institutional District.
Okay. I'm not... Did that answer your question?
That's fine. That's what we were asking.
Yes, sir. We're trying to make sure they're all under the same, under the same thing. So, it can be new ones, old ones, the 14 that are currently in the town, and any new ones.
And I'll be happy to show you the map. If you'd like to come to the Town Hall, I could show you the map of a larger scale for you. But it's all the schools in the town limits.
Good. Thank you.
So, and for clarity, all these locations, tax map locations that were identified, do have existing schools on them at this time?
Exactly. There's that one, like the middle school number six, you know, that was already approved. We have two elementary schools right now, number 11 and number 12, I believe, one at Mason's Bend and one near the Catawba High School. That has not been site plan approved yet, so I did not include it. We're almost ready to get those site plans approved, and then, we will come back for elementary, those two elementary schools. But yes, like the one on your list, you know, middle school number six is not built yet. But we are changing it to Institutional.
And whether our plans, are there any additional school district properties that are undeveloped that are in the town limits at this time?
At this time, no. These are all the lists that I received. And we did meet with them to let them know in the future, and they were in support of it.
Further questions? We'll close the public... Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Pleasant No in particular is where we've seen our sign for the zoning. So, are there any changes to Pleasant No?
No, we're not doing any changes or upgrades or anything. We're just changing the zoning of the property itself.
So, from the county to the city?
No, it's already in the city. We just take it out like kind of residential or industrial and make it one zone just for the schools.
Oh, okay. Okay, I understand.
We're trying to prevent that if something does happen and, God forbid, the school shuts down and they try to sell the property, that we don't suddenly have a boom of houses in these areas that are... Because some of these are zoned mixed use, some of them are R-15, R-10. There's a hodgepodge of property scattered about the town. We're just trying to get a handle on it so that if something does happen and the school closes, that it doesn't get in front, so we can be in front of it instead of it in front of us.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Oh, no. Thank you for the questions. It helps clarify. Sometimes the language is a little bit dry. Unfortunately.
We just want to know if we're changing the property use from what to what in what areas?
We're securing the property use as a school moving forward. How's that?
Yeah, I had several phone calls when the signs went up. And I had to explain to them what we were doing because they were scared that we were changing the properties so they can bring in apartments or whatever, so somebody can take the property.
Just the opposite. Just the opposite.
And it really came to light when the school district asked for the last round of properties that were being annexed in and approved for a school. We started looking at it, and the property was zoned residential. And we're like, well, if something were to happen and they didn't need it for a school, we want to be sure it wouldn't be sold off and used for residential. So, once we approved it to come into the town for that use, we wanted to keep it for that use.
Keep it for town use.
Correct. So, this has been going on, as Penelope said. We had to work with the school district to make sure we're all together in that partnership. But we're all on the same page that we're trying to limit that growth.
Did that help answer your question?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you for asking.
Friday Night Lights will stay... Well, no, Wednesday Night Lights at Pleasant No, yes.
It's a little small.
Numbers and letters.
Yeah, you want to read these numbers? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on this item, and I will...
For clarification, Mayor, you were reading, about midway through here, you were reading and assumed that the numbers were sequential, and you just read the last two or three numbers of several of these?
Okay.
They're not sequential.
I see 12, I see...
29, 140. 20, 21, 135, 20, 12, 132 were not read out that way.
Thank you. You earned your keep tonight. Thank you. Let it be known that I read three of the numbers out thinking they were sequential. They were not. We'll close the public hearing at this time. We have a motion on the floor and a second to approve. Do we? We do not. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve new business item number two.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve, new business item number two. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please, by show of hand. Aye? All those opposed, nay? Thank you so much. New business item number three, a resolution authorizing staff to apply for and accept, if awarded, the Municipal Association of South Carolina Hometown Economic Development Grant. This will be Chris Pettit as our expert. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, accept new business item number three.
Have a motion and a second. All right, Christopher, would you like to address us?
Yes, Mayor, this is a grant put on by the Municipal Association. And as part of the application requirements, council is asked to basically approve this resolution in support of staff applying for and accepting that grant if it's awarded to us. It's agreeing to provide the local match monies for the grant and also just agreeing that we will follow all necessary procurement guidelines if we are awarded the grant.
Okay. And what's the timeframe for...
The deadline for staff making the application is September 27th.
And what's the turnaround?
Mayor, I'm not certain when they would provide the awarding of that grant. But it's a, staff's asking, as you've seen in the resolution, for a maximum $25,000 grant. So, for a local match of $3,750, we hopefully will receive a $25,000 grant.
That'd be great. Any questions for Christopher?
Motion. On the grants, Christopher, is there an opportunity for additional funds from maybe hospitality tax or anything else on these ways? Are there signs, tourism funds that are out there?
There could be use of other pots of money for this. We were simply looking at this one for, to help in paying for them next fiscal year. But certainly, we can explore other options as well, in addition to this grant, hopefully.
I think this is for new money, and the hospitality and accommodations taxes can certainly be used for a host of other things, dependent on how we determine the need and the timing with the budget and those items. So, we can use both, but this is to reach out and secure new money that's available if we fill out the form and meet the needs. Any further questions?
I just want to thank the town staff for looking out for these grant opportunities. You guys are bringing more and more to us, and we're stirring them up lately. So, it's been great to see this money that's out there for us to go get.
Further questions or comment? Hearing none, we do have a motion on the table and a second, and no numbers to read. So, all those in favor, please say aye? Aye. All those opposed, nay? Thank you so much. New business item number four, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance to adopt the budget for the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2019, and ending September 30th, 2020. Shante Bowler is our expert. Shante, we'll open the public meeting first, if you will, please. Public meeting is open for any comments on the budget.
Is this the time I do the public presentation? Is this the time?
She asked if she could do the presentation?
Sure. Thank you. Hand warmers, that's all right. They're warmers. Because we've opened the public hearing, but because you haven't made the presentation, it'd be kind of complicated. Barry, can we let her do the...
I would just, I would open the public hearing, let her make the presentation, and then take any comments after.
Got it. Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you, ma'am. So, first, I want to thank Christopher because he knows I'm illiterate when it comes to PowerPoints. So, he was my teammate today. So, we want to start off by, oh, giving you a snapshot of our budget calendar in terms of how the process timeline flowed. Our preparation phase started back in late May and moved through mid-August in terms of getting our information, hearing from our department heads concerning their request, and then, working with the town manager in various meetings with those department heads to bring us to the draft budget that we submitted to you all on August 27th, August 17th, when we had the workshop with you. And then, from there, we came to the sixth, at which point, we provided to you the manager's recommended budget. And then, tonight, of course, we're having the hearing and the readings per law that we have to have in order, as part of the budget process. So, I just wanted to show that. And of course, our fiscal year starts October 1st, and it ends September 30. As we move forward, I wanted to just... As we move forward, I wanted to just give an overall combined townwide snapshot of what the budgets look like in total compared to FY 1819. We have a total of $80 million that's being recommended in this budget, and that is an increase of $20 million over 1819 year, which is about 34.6%. And then I wanted to show you, from a pie perspective, I know some of us are visual, what all of those various funds look like in relationship to the whole pie. Our gross revenue fund budget is taking up 43.9%. The general fund, 27.6. The capital projects fund, 17.7. The stormwater utility fund, 1.4. Our hospitality tax, 5%. Our accommodations tax, .9. The fire protection impact fee fund, .8. The municipal facilities impact fee fund, .6. And then the parks and rec impact fee fund, 2.1%. And this is my last visual. Just wanted to show you by category how these different expenditures size up. Our personnel expenditures make up about 20.2%. Our operating expenditures, 20.6%. And then our capital outlay is about 59.2%. The capital outlay represents major types of projects that we have planned. And then as we move into the general fund, we are projecting revenues at 22,184,242, which is an increase of 1.6 million over prior year. Some of the revenue items that are contributing factors to our revenue growth is our property tax, which is about 1.2 million. Our garbage revenue is up about 100,000. And then we continue to get those funds from the state for equipment rental surcharges, 500,000. And a new item this year, um, we are expecting to get about $60,000 from the state, South Carolina Parks and Recreation and Tourism. Help me with that. In terms of some funds that Representative Ray Felder helped us to secure to help with additional recreation projects. And then I'd like to show you the history of our millage. Again, we are not recommending a millage increase this year. And I wanted to give you a snapshot of what that has looked like over time. But for the fat, the last good number of years, we have been at 86 mills. And then when we go to our expenditures, of course, they do balance with our projected revenues. We are looking or recommending, you know, from the personnel standpoint, four full-time positions. Additionally, there are some salary adjustments that resulted from the comprehensive compensation study that we just had completed back in July. And then, um, we are, we'll have some increased costs for our medical insurance and for the South Carolina Retirement System contributions. Now, that will be, um, that will go for all of our funds where we have personnel. Those same, same three items there will contribute to our increases. And then to talk about some of our other expenditures, just picking some of those things that help, uh, drive those costs. We have an ADA transition plan update of $40,000. Downtown master plan of $80,000. Wayfinder signage of $50,000. A new website of $50,000. Machinery and equipment of 449,000. 12 new vehicles at 399,000. And then some other capital outlay items of 997,000. And then our contingency, which is therefore items that may occur that, uh, that we are not aware of, we have 3,90865 dollars there. And moving on to our gross revenue fund, our cho, uh, total projected revenues are 35,274,216, which is an increase of 13 million over the prior year. Uh, some of our revenues, uh, our water sales are projected to go up 306,000 and our sewer sales at 10,000. We will be issuing, I mean, no, we will be utilizing parts of the bond issues that we performed last year as the big project for the wastewater treatment plant. So we will be using about 21 million of those funds in this particular budget year. We are recommending, uh, rate increases in keeping with our rate analysis projections at a rate of 7.5%. You will see those as part of your budget ordinance. As the appendix to the budget ordinance is the rate schedule. So those, um, rates have been highlighted in yellow, but they reflect this seven and a half percent increase per our rate study analysis.
And then that mainly brought about because of the increase on Rock Hill?
It has long since known that our rates would increase incrementally over a period of time because of the charges that we pay to obtain, uh, the water, yes.
And because of the money that we borrowed.
Yes.
Uh, last year.
Thank you, Mr. Huntley.
And then our total projected, uh, expenditures are at 35,000,274,216 as well. And some of the items that are driving these numbers, we are recommending six full-time, new full-time positions, the same salary adjustments, an increase in medical insurance and retirement system hold true as well here. Other expenditures include equipment at $6,000. Four new vehicles at 103,000. Water meters at 456,000. The Bass Street water tank, and I believe this would be the year of completion?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, 2.2 million. And then the waste treatment plant upgrade phase two at 19 million. And then we have a contingency of 65,000 for this fund. Moving on to the stormwater utility fund, our revenues are projected at 1,142,731. Our fees are 1,136,802, and then there's a little miscellaneous income there of 5,5929 dollars. Our expenditures do balance with the revenues. We are asking for two full-time positions here as well as the salary adjustments in the medical insurance and retirement system cost. This fund is asking for equipment in the amount of 105,000. Sidewalk asphalt repair, 10,000. Structure maintenance, 10,000. And then it has a small contingency of 49,000. Moving on to the capital projects fund, we have total revenues of 14,205,000, which is an increase of 3.9 million over prior year. These incomes are coming from the sale of mausoleums, interest income, and then we are utilizing a fund balance appropriation of 3.8 million. And in addition to that, transfer first in from our special revenue funds to help offset these costs. And we will be issuing some new debt in the amount of 3 million, which will help with some of the projects that I'm about to mention. As it relates to our expenditures, again, 14,205,000. Capital projects master planning, 200,000. The Banks Athletics Park is 6,600,000. This is the portion of the total project that will be completed in FY 1920. Walter Elijah Park improvements, 1 million. The amphitheater, 1,650,000. Fire station number two, 1,930,000. And I believe this is the completion year for the fire station. Then we have CMAC project local matches for sidewalk work of 225,000. And then for miscellaneous sidewalk projects, 100,000. And then we have recreation facilities improvements of 2.5 million. 500,000 of that is for the tennis courts at the YMCA. And then 1,500,000 of that is for the Fort Mill Community Center, which is also known as Bank Street Gym. And then 500,000 for the building's maintenance and upkeep at the YMCA building, which was formerly known as the Leroy Springs Recreation Complex for those who don't know that. So that is our total for expenditures for our capital projects fund. Simply with our special revenue funds, for our hospitality tax revenues, we are projecting 4,050,000. 850,000 of that will be coming from taxes, the hospitality tax, taxes, and then a fund balance appropriation of 3.2 million. Those funds will then be transferred out. 200,000 of that will go to the general fund that helps to offset the cost of the South Carolina Strawberry Festival. The other 3.8 million will go to the capital projects fund to offset those projects that we just discussed or just mentioned. When we get to the accommodations tax, local accommodations tax fund, we are re, uh, we are estimating 350,000 in taxes and a fund balance appropriation of 400,000, totaling 750,000, and that 750 will be transferred as well to the capital projects fund for the various projects that qualify. For our accommodations state, we are, oh, I have a little, uh, that should be 210,000 in taxes. And that money is distributed based upon a formula that was established by the state that we have to follow. And that's the results of that formula, what you see there as expenditure notes. Advertising, 55,500. Tourism, 120, 250. Part of that tourism, 120, 250, we do give to, uh,
Mr. Dunlop?
The gentleman that just left.
The busy guy.
Yes. And then, um, the transfer to the general fund is the portion of the fun, of the formula that allows for us to get some of those funds as well for just normal operating. And then moving on to the fire impact fee fund, we're looking at total revenues there of 629,775, part of which is coming from fees projected at 112,456, and then fund balance at 517,319, all of which will again be transferred to the capital projects fund. Municipal facilities impact fee projected at 484,545, uh, fees of 232,21, and a fund balance appropriation of 252,324, which will again be transferred to the capital projects fund. If you will recall, we continue to pay ourselves back for buying the building, uh, over on 200 Tom Hall Street. And then lastly, the Parks and Rec impact fee fund, total revenues at 1,650,000. We're expecting fees of 705,418 with a fund balance appropriation of 944,582. And those funds will also be transferred in to the capital projects fund to help with these costs of the various projects that qualify. Mayor, this ends the presentation.
All right. At the end of the presentation, um, we are currently in the public, um, hearing. Do we have any question or comment?
I'd like to make a comment as it pertains to the, uh, Fort Mill Economic Council, which will be changing their name to Fort Mill Economic Partners or Partnership or something. Right now, uh, other than special projects, about all we give them is 200, which is my membership. I represent the council. And I'm going to propose that we become a corporate sponsor, much like Comporium or, uh, South State Bank. And that'd be to the tune of about 2,000. And that's opposed to, uh, giving them 50,000.
That's a, something that council can take into advisement. Um, we're in the public comments section, public hearing, so council members, you've heard, uh, Mr. Huntley's request. Trudy, did you have something?
I did. Shante, you mentioned something about the strawberry festival, and I'm not sure exactly why I didn't catch.
The transfer in from the hospitality tax to, to the general fund to help with the South Carolina Strawberry Festival.
Okay.
And so it was 200,000.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
For those of you that are listening to this, the hospitality fund and the accommodations funds are collected, but they're restricted on how we can use those for the benefit of the whole. So, uh, we are very careful to evaluate the opportunities that exist because there are more projects than we could ever possibly fund. But, um, we take great, um, great effort in ensuring that everything's on the table and that we do our best to spread that across all sectors of our budget. So, uh, those are funds that everybody pays every time you go eat at a restaurant or stay at a hotel. Uh, there's a portion of what you pay that comes back to the town to be redistributed to increase the opportunities in our community. But again, it's restricted. Yes, ma'am?
Is it okay for me to respond to Mr. Huntley's?
If, if you'd like.
I just want to ask, I just want to ask coun, council in relation to his question. Would you all be deciding that soon?
Well, we know we have another reading the end of this month, and I do think it's something that.
Be the final meeting.
Yeah, I think it's something we have to, um, give consideration as the request has been made with, uh, good intent. I do think I'd like to clarify that the 50,000 that he is alluding to is a request. It is not something that we're required to do. So, um, you know, we, we certainly want to be absolutely clear with, uh, we're asked by many entities for funding. That is taxpayer money, and you have done an excellent job, you and your staff and the staff, in ensuring that we are as financially healthy a community as we've ever been. Uh, our financial health is excellent, and, uh, we're very proud of that. So we don't want to do anything that would jeopardize that in any shape, form, or fashion.
Could you repeat what our rating is? Didn't we have an increase in our rating?
That's on the utility side. We did. We went from a double A minus to a double A.
To a double A. And we have a capital projects master plan, uh, Banks Athletic Park, Elijah Park improvements, amphitheater, yet fire station number two, sidewalk projects, recreation facilities, the community center, and we have not raised taxes in 12 years? And you're recommending we don't raise them yet?
That's my rec, well, that's our recommendation.
And I'm saying that because that's a testament to your guys' hard work at keeping our budget and keeping us financially sound.
I'd like to hire you to do my personal budget. Because I think I'd make out better.
Do we still get anything from the South Carolina Municipal Fund?
I'm not sure I know what funds you're talking about.
I was kind of hoping you'd know what I was talking about. Uh, it was a fund that, uh, like if an insurance company does business in Fort Mill, instead of Fort Mill collecting, the state collects it, and then they double it out among the municipalities. I know one year, uh, some of these smaller towns were going to go broke if they didn't get that fund. And I think at that time, we were getting about 50,000.
We, we do have an arrangement with the Municipal Association for what, what they call, uh, broker's tax collection and insurance tax collections. Those are two separate programs, and we are part of those programs. And we do get those monies. They are recorded under the business license revenue.
Great, thank you.
Perfect. Any further questions before we close public hearing?
Shante, if you have to sum it up in one big statement, when you look just high level at the change in all of these, the recommended budget, um, to go from last year's to this year's, it's a 20 million dollar change, a 30, almost 35% increase. That's huge.
Yes.
However, what do you attribute the majority of that to? And? However, what do you attribute the majority of that to and?
Now, when we're looking at that, we're looking in total.
Correct.
So that's, that's every, um, every fund. So we just talked about the fourteen million in capital projects fund. Uh, we just talked about two million for a fire, well, that, you're in capital projects. But the utilities fund side with the waste treatment plant upgrades and the, uh, uh, water tank. And then some of the, uh, additional things that we are asking for in the general fund side of things, they make up the biggest portion.
So a significant part of it is capital projects, long-term projects and investments.
Yes, ma'am.
And a lot of this is debt-free because it's money we've been banking and transferring.
Well, not all of it is debt-free.
Not all of it, some of it is. No, I get it. Yeah, some of it is. Um, but there have been significant transfers last several years to our capital.
Yes, ma'am. When it comes to the capital project side of things, a good bit of that money is monies we have been saving over the years. And part of it is coming from the fund balance appropriations that we transfer over on a yearly basis. We've been blessed to have surplus. And so we've been able to transfer those funds over. So that is money that we don't have to go out and borrow.
Perfect. Thank you for the summary.
I'm almost scared to say it. Any other comments before we close the public hearing? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve new business item number four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve new business item number four. All those in favor, please say aye by show of hand. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you, Shontae. Excellent work. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
New business item number five, first reading. An ordinance, of an ordinance to raise revenue by setting the tax millage for the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, for the tax year ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, and for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Shontae, you're an expert. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion except business item number five.
Second. You've got a motion and several seconds.
Okay, so this is the first of two readings that we have to have for the official setting of the tax millage, which basically states that we will be setting our millage at eighty-six mills again for this upcoming fiscal year.
Any questions for Shontae?
And a mill is worth a hundred and nine?
Right now, it's around a hundred and nine thousand.
Further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much, Shontae. Again, wonderful work on your part for the benefit. New business item number six, approval of accommodations tax grant. I don't have an expert on here. That'd be you, Davy. Okay, let's have a motion first.
I make a motion excepting business item number six.
Have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. Davy, would you like to walk us through that, please?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Thank you, mayor. This again is the, is approval for the accommodations tax grant. This is, you spoke earlier about, uh, accommodation tax funding. Uh, the state, um, once the municipality starts receiving funds over fifty thousand dollars in accommodations taxes, uh, the state requires us to assemble a, uh, an accommodations tax advisory committee. That committee is comprised of, uh, local representatives from hospitality, accommodation, and cultural art industries. We then take that grant, money that is set aside for that grant, put it out to the community, um, and accept applications through that process. We started our process, uh, in March, April of this year. We had one applicant. We've taken that application to the, uh, accommodations tax advisory committee. They reviewed their application. I believe council has that application. And from that, um, discussion, they've recommended, um, funding thirty-five percent of the, um, application request from the Fort Mill History Museum, uh, the applicant. So, um, again, that totals, um, there was nine thousand, one hundred dollars requested in the event project expenses, uh, seven thousand, five hundred dollars requested through the new website and maintenance, um, and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars requested through the preservation of historic property. Uh, this is our third year in the program. This year was just a touch different than previous years because York County itself was designated as a high tourist area. So that changed some of the, um, some of the opportunities in funding, what you could be funded for. Uh, I think last year, uh, there were some, um, discussions and some concerns about funding for, um, any preservation of property or maintenance upkeep. There were some restrictions based on that. This year, there are restrictions based on it, but now that we're in a high tourist, um, county, that is more acceptable under this grant. But now the, the applicant has to, has to prove that they bring in a certain percentage of tourists that come into our, um, our town, our area and spend money in the hotels themselves. So, um, it's, it's their burden to prove that the number of bed nights they, they bring to town and tourists that they bring in from outside a fifty-mile radius of Fort Mill. So, um, the applicant, uh, provided us thirty-five percent of their tourism, uh, comes from outside tourists. So that's why the committee recommended, um, a thirty-five percent, um, providing them funding thirty-five percent of all of their expenditures.
Summary is that while we greatly value the work of many of our local entities, um, the distribution of funds is restricted by the programmatic approach and the guidelines that are provided to us. So we, we need to follow that to ensure that we continue to be able to collect those accommodations fees. So with that, thank you for your explanation.
Yes, ma'am. Can I add one other thing?
Yes, sir.
Before you do that. There is, again, there's restricted money with that grant. Uh, and any funds that are not, um, given out or doled out to applicants, then, uh, if it's not used, it has to be returned to the state. Um, we have, uh, Shontae has looked into this further with, um, with the, with the state itself and has found that if, you know, we can ask for an extension on any funding that is not paid out to any applicants and ask, and ask that that amount of money be dedicated toward a tourist-related town project. So we are, there is, uh, you were provided, um, fu, amounts that would be, could possibly be sent back to the state. The town will be requesting those funds through the state, uh, towards specific projects.
Okay.
So a question, um, in seventeen and eighteen, there were funds appropriated for the strawberry festival, but in nineteen it wasn't. Um, is that because of change in the requirements? Or is that an opportunity for us to go back in and get additional funds earmarked for the strawberry festival?
Yeah, the, that was due to, we had, the town, ATAX, and Shontae may can explain this better, but we are, um, provided is a twenty-five percent off the top of all of the funds and then an additional five percent, the next five percent. So the town is collecting that funding. Um, and then the strawberry festival, um, due to the projected construction area in the, in the Walter Wildasha Park, there may be some changes to the size of that festival. So the funding, we just did not ask for funding this year. We already were receiving some. But the additional, that money could be used possibly toward another project.
I'm sure we can find something.
We will find something.
Not a lack of it.
And I was going to say, um, yeah, there's a lot of, can we use it for wayf, van? Find their signs, thank you. But no, because there's no overnight stay required with that project.
I'm not certain. It, it's, it's dedicated toward tourist-related expenditures and projects. So possibly, we would, we just found this out recently, so we have to look into this a lot further. But just in order to move forward with, um, uh, petitioning the state for this funding, we would need you to vote on that. So you're going to have two votes tonight.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any further questions?
Yeah, was, what was the dollar amount?
The dollar amount?
Thirty-five percent, did it give a dollar?
Um, the dollar amount for.
Which, which dollar amount, Mr. Huntley?
For the History Museum.
Thirty-five percent, you were, for the History Museum.
The eighteen-five twenty-three?
Yes, eight, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd already closed my fast, if you ask.
Further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of business item number six motion, please say aye. Raise your hand. Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right. There are no information items for discussion. Uh, there is no executive session required this evening. Um, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor, please raise both hands. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us this evening.